I still showed another minute, but thanks for the reminder. I'm new at this. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Newton Planning Commission meeting for tonight. I want to thank everybody for being here. The first item on tonight's agenda is consider approval of the April 1st meeting minutes. Everyone had an opportunity to review the minutes? If so, I would entertain a motion for their approval.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
There's a motion and a second.
Second.
Any discussion in regard to the motion? Hearing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Yes? Opposed, say no. Motion carries. The next item on tonight's agenda is to elect a chair and a vice chair for the upcoming year. I know last year I told you that I would be absent a few meetings, and I was true to that fact. So I would like to start off by nominating Mike to be the chair for next year, since he's filled in quite well.
Second.
Did you hear that train coming?
Can I comment?
No. You accept the nomination?
Yeah.
Okay. Are there any other nominations? Hearing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Yes? Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Now we need the election of a vice chair.
I'd like to nominate Arlen Newell.
I'll second.
I'd nominate Greg Hanson.
Too late.
Do you accept that nomination, Arlen? Okay. Was that a true nomination, or were you just...
That was serious.
What's that?
That was serious.
No, not you, him.
Oh, I'll withdraw my nomination.
Okay. Any other nominations for the position of vice chair for the upcoming year? Hearing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor of Arlen signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. In your packet, there is a calendar for the ensuing year.
Carl, I have one more request, that we would designate Aubrey as the secretary for the...
Oh, I forgot, we did that last year.
Yes.
Is there a motion to appoint Aubrey as the secretary of the commission? Here's a motion by Jay. Second?
Second.
A motion and a second. Any other nominations for secretary? Hearing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor of the question signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Yes? Opposed, say no. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Aubrey. All right. Now, back to item three, to review the calendar of the ensuing year. Everybody sees that calendar in there? Had an opportunity to look at it? Questions, challenges? Otherwise, I would entertain a motion for the adoption of the ensuing year's calendar.
I'll make a motion to adopt the calendar for 2024-2025.
Is there a second? Was there a second? Okay, Jay. Okay. Thanks, Jay. Was there a question?
Nope, I just double-checked in the date, which we may both miss. But we're good.
Okay. Maybe we won't have a meeting. Okay. Any discussion in regard to the calendar? Hearing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor of the motion of the approved calendar signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Yes? Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Okay. Item four on tonight's agenda is a zoning amendment requested for East 12th Street and North Logan Street. Do you have this, Devin, or does Justin?
Yeah, I can take this.
Thanks, Devin.
So this is an application for a zoning amendment. The applicant requests that the described property be rezoned from an R3, which there's a typo in the memo, but it's a multifamily dwelling district, and to rezone that to a C2, which is a general business district. And this is at the corner of 12th Street and North Logan. So you can see Attachment E and F. There are the maps that show everything. Right there on the screen is the property we're talking about. So this, again, is just going to be a vote to approve or deny this rezoning, and then it's going to be sent to the City Commission as a recommendation from you guys. There are five criteria that we need to make a conclusion on each one, or a vote on each one. The staff comments on those. The first is whether the change in classification follows the intent of the, you know, comp plan of the city of Newton. And the staff comment there is when you're considering a change of zoning classification for any property, you need to consider whether every use that would be permitted under that would be appropriate for that property and the surrounding area. And so here you see that, you know, we're just changing an R3, and just across the kind of catty corner diagonal, there's C2. So it'd kind of almost be like an add-on to that district. So whether that fits in the area. And so, in other words, the use of a property, you know, may not be restricted to the particular use contemplated, but it may include any use allowed within that zoning classification. And so also, the second part of this, the second criteria that we're looking at is whether if it were reclassified, it'd be compatible with the uses permitted on other property located in the immediate vicinity. And like I just pointed out, catty corner, there is that same C2 zoning, which is, again, a general business district. And some of the uses for general business districts are any type of commercial recreation, including baseball fields, swimming pools, driving range. So a lot of different, just general business uses. So I think almost any general business use you could think of kind of comes under that district. And so you'll see in the memo that there's a long list of, you know, almost any business that's considered. The next criteria is whether adequate sewer and water facilities are already exist, or if they're needed. Staff comment, all public utilities are existing and connected to existing buildings on the site. The next criteria is whether the proposed amendment would correct an error in the application of these regulations. We're not aware of any errors that this would fix. The final criteria that you need to look at is whether the proposed amendment is made necessary because of changed or changing conditions in the area. And if so, the nature of such change or changing conditions, if they would provide a disproportionately greater loss to the individual landowner relative to the public gain. So kind of looking at the private ownership versus the public gain. The existing site is currently zoned R3, and it meets those zoning requirements for that existing church. And the applicant is pursuing a zoning change just to a business. And so they're going to try to use that church in a business fashion. So, yeah, we just need a vote on each one of those criteria. Or if you want to adopt it as written, would be fine as well.
Excellent. Is the applicant present, and do they want to speak or stand for questions? You want to... Do you wish to address the commission? You don't have to. I'm just asking if you want to. Would you please approach the microphone?
Thank you.
Please identify yourself.
Yes. Okay. My name is Jolene Ratzler, and I live in Histon, Kansas. So I did have a a question about the easements on the south edge of the 1219 North Logan. Because I have been trying to tidy up that along the border.
Okay.
And so I have moved away from the borderline like some cement blocks and bricks, and then I found a pile of decayed wood right on the borderline, you know, between the next property over from 1219 South. So I was wondering, you know, if I was in violation of going on there, you know, on that piece of ground, because it says, you know, it's an easement four feet south of the borderline.
Staff, do you care to take care of that? But even though it's an easement, you are expected to take care of the easement, even though it's an easement. So that would, if it was the lawn, you would be expected to mow it, so...
Right. And then, yeah, I located some fencing. It was grown up inside it, so it's still rolled up, but I pulled it away from the borderline. And then the cement blocks are still there, and then I did haul away some broken cement blocks.
Okay. Staff, any comments in regard to that?
Jolene, if I could call you tomorrow on that kind of stuff, I'd like to meet you on site, if that's possible, and we can discuss all that kind of stuff.
Okay. Yeah, that'd be fine.
Okay.
What... Do you have a time right now?
I can call you first thing in the morning.
Right. Okay.
So...
Any other comments, Ms. Ratzler?
No, I don't think so. I... There are two trees right in front of the church that are kind of obscuring the front part of it, and it isn't really to my liking, but right now I haven't contacted anybody to cut them down because they're they're not very nice-looking, right, to my view. So there's some...
That's something I can discuss with you tomorrow.
Okay, yeah. That would be... I think right now that might be all I have right now.
Are there any questions for the applicant in regard to this matter?
So there's actually two lots there, correct?
Yes.
So the church, the old church that was on the corner, you're planning on using it for a business of some kind, or a...
Yeah, yes.
And the other lot, you actually own both of those two lots that they're showing up there?
Yes.
And the extra lot, I don't think there's a structure on that second lot, like it shows up there anymore, so I think it's just a vacant lot.
Yes.
What are you planning to do with that vacant lot? Is that going to be parking for it, or what's your thoughts there?
Right. Well, at one point, I wanted to erect like a metal building, but since I had... That's a lot of reason why I wanted to rezone it, because I didn't want to rebuild like a residential house there. Maybe like a storage building, or maybe more likely, maybe making it to a parking lot, you know, for the... Because I make pottery. So that would be what I would
Okay.
use it for, the altar. So that might be in the... You know, I might want to have it either paved or concreted, or I don't know if gravel would be acceptable to the city, you know, as a parking lot.
I think Justin can talk to you about all those after this.
Okay, that'd be great.
Any other questions for the applicant? We don't need a public hearing on this, do we?
You do.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you very much, Ms. Ratzler.
Thank you.
At this time, I'd like to open up a public hearing in regard to this zoning application. This time, is there anyone here who would like to speak in favor or against this application? Seeing no one come forward, I'd like to close the public hearing and bring it back to the bench. Bench, do you have any other questions for staff or the applicant?
Does that church not have any historical significance yet? That's the first African-American church in Newton.
Right. You know, he always claimed it was, yeah, historical, whenever he appeared before the commission. But I don't know that it carries, and maybe that's a question for you, Rebecca, if it carries any current standing in regard to historical.
We have looked at the building, and it is not currently on any registers that would affect this zoning.
Okay. Good question, Jay.
What's the pink area?
Mobile Home Park.
Yeah, MP.
For both of them?
Yep.
Other questions? Hearing none, I come to the commission for a motion in consideration.
I'll make a motion to approve the request to change the zoning from R3 to C2 designation.
We also need to, for the record, as part of the motion, have findings in regard to A versus D, E. A versus E? You could find that they are all...
All in accordance, yes. All in accordance with...
Jay, is that okay with you? All right. Any questions about the motion? We have a motion and a second.
Yeah, I'd like to discuss it maybe a little bit.
Okay.
We've been fairly consistent on being careful on rezoning to C2 in and around and close to residential areas. We've approved a couple. We denied a couple. We've denied one that was just as close to another C2 district like this before. And the problem was always not is what is there today, but what could potentially be there at some point in time down the road, when you look at this list. It's not really a yes or a no. It's more of a, we've had this discussion before.
Yeah, the thought I had making the motion was with the uses around it, adjacent to the C2. We have a good street there, Arterial Street, 12th Street, and the uses adjacent to it. It's a business going in there that meets any of those listed. I don't think would be, my personal opinion, wouldn't be detrimental to the area. That was my thought.
It's also R3 adjacent to it as opposed to R1. Yeah. I mean, well, it's mobile home, and then that R3 zone that you see there. You know, there are some R3 properties within the block of that. The other question I guess I kind of have is if it's a metal, if it's an exterior building, you know, are we making her go through some steps she doesn't need to go? You can put up a building on the existing vacant lot today.
What she's wanting to do is the proposal in front of us is to be able to turn that into a pottery shop.
To run a business.
To run a business in the current building. There's been no discussion of a building on our side until tonight. So that's first I've heard of it.
So you would want to, I think, is it okay to ask?
Sure is.
So, ma'am, are you planning on selling pottery out of there? Or are you making pottery and then taking it somewhere else and to a farmer's market and selling it there? Are you planning on it being a retail-type shop where people would be parking and coming in and doing that sort of thing?
Yes, that would be my first idea to do. That would be my overall to do there.
Okay. I would like to speak in favor of the motion. I think it's a good fit. You know, to have some activity there, I think it's surrounded by some high-intense uses, both the mobile home parks and the C2 across the street. And because it's on an arterial, that's where we'd want it. I think some of those other C2s have occurred not on arterial or less than arterial. So I would speak in favor of the motion. Other comments? Hearing none, I will call the question. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Whole business on tonight's agenda is to review the comprehensive plan. Danielle, are you handling this?
Testing. Oh. Good evening. I hope you guys have your coffee. Or your tea, or your caffeine drink, whatever works best. So I have a thought. I'd like to maybe go over sort of the plan of how to go through this and not be here till 10 o'clock at night. So option one is we can split this up into two, do half tonight and do half the next meeting. The next option is my preferred option, but I will defer to you. If you prefer, there are eight strategies, I would call them areas. And under each strategy or area is five to 15 goals. We can go by area, and I can open up the floor for any item you'd like to discuss at length, because there are items that have been completed that don't necessarily need a lot of discussion, or that perhaps we've decided not to pursue. And that leaves the ball in your court to bring up what you'd like to discuss. That way, we're not going through every single item. So whichever you prefer, if we go route option B, which is going by project area, I will also bring up a couple that I'd like to discuss. So whichever you prefer, or if there's an option C, please feel free. Just thinking of your time.
I want to propose an option C.
Absolutely.
So housing in neighborhoods, I want to take separately, and I don't want to take it right away. The American Planning Association, in partnership with the National League of Cities, has just came out with a housing supply accelerator playbook, is the call. I spoke at their national convention a few weeks ago about this endeavor, and they're looking at what things planning commissions and planners have been doing that have been stifling housing growth in communities. So I'd like to compare what that plan is. It just came out last week. So if we could take a little more time on housing, I know that it's... It's, I know Commissioner Arlen brings it up a lot about, you know, promoting housing in our area, and I am kind of a cheerleader on that too myself. So if we could not make any decisions on that and start looking at maybe some things that we are doing that could either help us out, so we can start with that. And then I would defer the commission about however they would like to do it. And I would, you know, I was part of the Re-Newton Project a number of years ago when we did this, and I'm really glad to see that we're making some headway in a lot of these projects. So go ahead.
May I, I just want to clarify, and I should have said something before giving you the options. I am under the impression, and please correct me if I'm wrong, and this is experience and what my staff has informed me, that the goal for tonight is not to change anything in the plan. It's to maybe tweak it. This plan is what I would call outdated and needs to be revamped. That revamping process, which we talked about at the last commission meeting, or two planning commissions, that revamping process means that we're going to go out for a new comprehensive review, comprehensive plan sooner than 2030. So because this plan is so outdated, and when I say outdated, more than 75% of it is complete, that we're not waiting till 2030 to do a comp plan. Staff is on board with doing this, going out for qualifications in the next year, and redoing this plan in the next 24 months. So because we would be going through, I mean, that's 75% that we would have to change, unless you have some certain areas that you'd like to concentrate on. But why update such an old plan? Let's just, it's almost time to go new. That's what we had proposed.
Excellent.
If you're good with that.
As long as we have, can plug that part in.
Yeah. So are you wanting feedback to start looking at the next comp plan? Is that basically...
No. No.
You just kind of want to, where we're at today?
Yeah. We're definitely going to get there.
Okay.
Tonight is just, we're trying to check mark off the box that we have reviewed this plan. And when I say review the plan, I mean, we've really looked at it and say, we are, yes, complete, or we have strategically decided not to pursue some of these items, and that's why they're blank. And put that in the boxes. There may be items you have questions. I know I have some questions. Staff has been very patient with me in asking all the questions. So tonight, the goal was to put our eyes on all the action items and ask, maybe dialogue about how to move forward before we start the new plan. So from now until, let's say, early 2026, when the plan kicks off, what would you like to see that either has not been accomplished, or is currently being accomplished? Because all the stuff we've done, we can mark that as a success. So... Any thoughts about that? Or you can say scrap all that. I mean, whatever you want. This is your show.
I would just add, I'm sure when you were looking through this, it made you think of some things. Hey, I really wish we had this in here. And so if you've thought of those things, why don't we take those down to start adding a list of items that we want to look at for the new comp plan? And, but there's a legality in place that we need to check a box that says we've reviewed this and everything that Daniela just said. But if you have things that you've looked at and really thought about in this process, let us take those down as things we want to make sure are in the next one, or that we want to review and add to, like the housing stuff, the housing accelerator stuff. If you get that to us, we would definitely put that in the packet for everybody to review.
Certainly.
We can leave the, we can still separate the housing neighborhoods and have it at a later time.
I think maybe we just go right through A, and you just say, this is what we're doing, and we'll see if we can click through as much of it as possible. What do you think, everybody?
Sure.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. For the first one, the strategy or the subject area is preserving community character. The, most of them have been touched or are in the ongoing process. The one item that sticks out is a community collaborative council, which the action item is to create a community collaborative council to improve coordination and communication. This is a group of individuals, nonprofits, faith-based groups, the chamber. I don't know that I have a status update. Staff, and I don't know if Rebecca, Rebecca wasn't here, Suzanne, maybe give an update. But we digged a little, and I don't know that we had a plan for this. We don't even have a definition. So that, as it stands, I would say that we would, because we don't know what it is, what the end goal is, what's behind that, which I was unable to find, that we kind of maybe just skip that one, just leave it as is.
Questions, comments in this section?
Or if you have any input, please.
Well, I just have one comment about that. I remember back when this was done, they sent questionnaires out, the citizens... I, I remember back when this was done, they sent questionnaires out, the, the citizens got to provide input to the comp plan. And maybe you remember Carl, but I figured some of that communication came out of those surveys, the need for the public to, just throwing that out there. That'd be my assumption that the next round that you, there would be citizen feedback.
Yeah, well, and the other point, I guess, that would be well taken with you saying, hey, we did some outreach then is social media wasn't really a thing when we first did this. And so we receive a lot of comments back. We're able to do surveys in a different way now. And so we are able to glean additional information. So maybe to Daniela's point, this is kind of not a necessary piece. Maybe this is already handled in other ways. I, I don't know. This is one of the handful of them that when I went back through and read this, just because I'd been here long enough to think through what was intended and what we had done to hit these, I couldn't, I don't know what was intended or anything that really checked the box on this one.
I did go through the survey results. Some of the survey results are in the comp plan at the end. We also dug in some of the original survey results and a lot of it was more communication, more transparency within local government. So, and just like Suzanne said, we didn't have a newsletter. We didn't have a monthly email. We didn't have, we didn't live stream. We didn't, we didn't do all the things that we're currently doing. I'm not saying that it solves this action item or checks it off, but we're in a much better spot where we were 15 years ago. I'm curious as to what this would look like from a resident's standpoint. Because I'm on the other side. I'm trying to think of what that could look like and if we would have participation.
I think, I think you're, you know, Newton, the city of Newton's website has a lot of information on it, whether it's, that's, that's really out, outreaching. I mean, you've got minutes of meetings, you've got agendas of meetings, you've got announcements of meetings. You've, you've got other community calendar kinds of things on there. So again, I don't believe that was present 14 years ago or whenever, you know, so. So I think, I think we're doing some of it. It's just probably hard to get our arms around what, what the finished product looks like. And it's probably not a finished product. It's probably moving all the time, right? So.
Yeah, I would say that this action item, if, if, and I'm, this is an educated guess, that the, the response to this would be processes that are already ingrained in how we, in how we function. So although we didn't create a collaborative, a community collaborative council, perhaps we're solving that communication request through who we are today. Okay. So what I would do is in the status or the comments for this, for this year, just so we can actually have a finished document that we actually discussed and touched this, I would propose putting in the status, we, you know, this group has decided that the ongoing community, the ongoing communication within the community and from the city is.
Serves a similar purpose.
Serves a similar purpose, yes. We'll leave as is.
Even though there's not a formal council provided or, or set up that we believe the communication is coming through other means.
I agree.
So maybe that will work. Other comments on, on this particular? Yeah, still on that one.
Yeah.
Okay. Let's go ahead and move on to housing in neighborhoods before we tackle that, knowing that we're in start process.
Would you like, since housing in neighborhoods is a very important one, would you like me to go down the list? Or would you like me to just bring up the items that don't have a response?
So why is the Build Newton Initiative Plan in yellow? Because that was halted?
Which, let's see, one second.
Housing in neighborhoods?
Oh, did I leave it yellow?
I thought that was.
That was.
Go ahead.
It was not supposed to be yellow. So I, excuse me, I created a document for myself and anything that I did not know about, I highlighted in yellow so I could talk to Rebecca about it so she could educate me on what it was. So please disregard the highlighting. That's, that's for me.
My eyes go right to the.
Yeah, sure, I'm sorry.
But.
I'm a, I use color coding.
It was a two-year plan. What did we think of the success of that plan? Because I was, I was reading tonight that, that California is doing something similar. They put aside tens of millions in this process. And they, but not, not like this process, but other cities are doing that, that kind of. And I remember when that was established, being able to attract builders who could build and sell faster in other communities
Sure.
to entice them to come up here and build. So, and I don't know that we spent a lot of money on that project, but, but it seemed to have some fruit.
So yeah, I'll go just follow up on that. So that project ended up in my lap. We did close out the program with the city commission's approval. We redistributed those funds to other revitalization efforts. There were a couple of programs. As you might remember, that program was able to rebate back the construction loan interest on new builds from the time they achieved their certificate of occupancy until the sell-by date. What we noticed is that we were pretty much only working with a single builder. We were not getting a diversity of builders. And most of the time, the payout was very, very small. We'd end up as a city actually encumbering quite a substantial amount of funding. And so because it had administrative approval, the previous city manager was able to, we worked together administratively to approve a lower amount so we could hopefully get more properties in the initiative. Because our average payout was about $2,000. And it did work, but we just didn't have the need, the, at the time, the market was getting quite hot, frankly. And they just found that they were on average not needing the funding. They were, it was a few hundred dollars what was coming out for most of them. It would just be a couple of homes that needed a larger payout. So we went ahead and with the commission's approval, redistributed those funds to another housing type initiative.
Any other questions in regard to that part?
No, I'd reiterate that, but I, I also would question how well of a job we did getting the word out to other builders outside of our area. At the same time, I mean, the, the program, we, we paid very little out because you're right. It just happened to be a very hot time and a time when new construction was going crazy and everything was selling before that we had to make any payments. But the, the reason I would ask about, again, is it was always the one was, he was the only one really building. So did we get the word out?
We did have other builders. Our procedure here was when the builders would come to pull their permits, we would inform them of the program if they were interested in. So if you pulled a building, a housing permit.
Right.
And there was a spot available, that wouldn't go back to that encumbrances. When we were encumbering a larger amount, the program would fill up and you'd end up not being able to allow out. So in the first year or two of it, we had quite a number of financial resources encumbered that we ended up not paying out. So that's why trying to get that to that smaller amount that was closer to our actual payment allowed us to reach out to more builders. But if we did have funding available that was not encumbered, we went to the first person that came to ask for our building permit for a new home. And they had to be spec homes. They couldn't be custom homes. That was part of the resolution as well.
Correct. I don't know how many spec homes we really built during that timeframe. My, my question was, is, I mean, if, if builders didn't know about the program, they're not going to come up here and just say, hey, I want to build here.
Right.
We would inform at the time that they reown the building, they're well into their, making the decision to come here at that point in time. So that would be my point on it.
Sure.
If, if you're looking for an improvement to the program, I guess.
Also, I don't know if COVID had anything to do with that. I mean, 2019, 2020, right, 2020, I don't know. Looking forward, correct me if I'm wrong Rebecca, we now have two positions, commercial, one's residential development, which is her position, and Zach, our community development director, also a new position who handle that kind of recruiting, answering the questions. We have two new positions in the last 15 years that handle this. We also have a marketing plan for that type of recruitment. We attend WABA every year. We're now more exposed with social media and all the other things that we're doing that I think would put us out there in a much better place than we did 15 years ago. So I'm excited just naturally of where we stand there. We're probably going to be better off 10 years from now. People blink their eyes and they'll know everything. I don't know. But I just wanted to throw that out there.
My only point in bringing it up was that I think there's always a place for something like that, whether it was that program or some kind of incentive. Because again, if people can build in those areas that are closer in and turn their property faster, then they're going to go there first.
Sure.
That's all.
We just happen to be at a time where there would probably be three different builders right this minute that would be taking advantage of the program.
Gotcha.
We no longer have available to them. Does that change anything? And we have a potential, as you all know, kind of a boon with two brand-new developments that could lead to a lot of speculation of some kind.
Sure, sure.
So just, just some ideas of maybe bringing that back or something similar.
Got it.
The one right below that, the supporting of the non, the Hope Home Repair. It, it says done.
Done.
But it, again, I think that means done and over. Because I don't think Hope Home is still available to us, correct?
Correct, correct.
So we, we don't have anything available for that, that particular program as of today.
Correct, correct.
And haven't had for a while because Hope Home has been out of business for a while. So I, I don't love the word that it says they're done.
Sure, sure, sure.
A program like that should always be ongoing in some manner, in my, in my opinion.
Yeah, I forgive the, the wording. Truly, this was a quick try to see where we, where we had hit on everything. I think the point of the, the done was, was my fault. It was, hey, yeah, we did this when we've tried it. It's something that we had going. We haven't had something else in place since, since then. But it is something that we've tried. We're just trying to hit on things here.
So maybe remarks in there could be that we found that was successful. It's just the program ran out.
Okay, yep, yeah.
So, and then, you know, in, in each one of those, rather than done.
No longer available.
And that we would like to continue programming like this in future comp plans.
If possible, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, absolutely.
Any other on housing? There's one item that, that's the second item. That was a question, that was a discussion I had with Suzanne and Rebecca at length. Create a task force to design a rental inspection or registration program, which was something that, so this one was sort of done, but it didn't succeed. Any questions on that? Because we're not pursuing that at any time going forward unless you or the commission say, hey, it's time to try it again. Not at this point, maybe at a renewal of a comprehensive plan. If it's the will of the commission, of our residents, of our business owners. But at this time, since it was tried and did not succeed, for whatever reason, we're not going to take this on in the next 24 months.
Yeah, I don't, I, I don't really have a, anything to say about that.
Okay.
That particular portion on the rental. However, there is a new type of rental, obviously, that I think that the city commission probably does need to look at. You know, we've been, we've been dealing with that for a while.
Okay.
And where is that inside the comprehensive plan? I don't see it. Is this the spot for that? Do you, do you, do you create that in this particular spot? Because it is a type of rental.
What are we talking about?
It may as be for one night.
Yeah, it didn't exist though back when they prepared.
That's exactly right.
VRBOs and VRBOs.
That'll probably be on, on that next, for the next. I'm like, what are we talking about?
That was a comment I had too.
Again, do you want to wait two years though? I mean, that's my question. I, I don't think we want to wait two years. So I think we need to add it somewhere in this, in this housing neighborhood program.
Okay, yeah, we can definitely tap into that.
And I, and I think, you know, there should be something about different housing opportunities. I, I don't, you know, we're talking about aging in place, infill. We don't really speak in the comprehensive plan to town homes or other, you know, attached that are not, you know, some could be town homes for sale or the condivization of certain things. So I think as we look at that. Anything that we're, else that we're leaving out in housing?
Oh, that's on the. I know. In preserving community character, there was one that I'd like to bring up. I don't mean to go back and forth, but.
Sure.
There is a strategy called retain existing neighborhood schools. The action item is to work with the school board to retain the existing neighborhood schools or to creatively reuse vacant structures. This one, when the time comes, if, if it were an opportunity for the city to help the school district or support or work together on a project like this, we would definitely do that. But it is not, I would say, our, it is not our say. We would, and we, we could incentivize it, we could recommend it, we could work together to reutilize these beautiful old buildings. But I don't know that there is necessarily action to be taken. So this is another one that I would recommend we say ongoing as needed or as, yeah. It was just blank, I just wanted to.
I, we, I saw it yellow and I was okay with going past it because I don't know what we would do.
Yeah, we don't either.
And I would be curious as to the communication that you might have with the school district. And so that it, so it wouldn't come, you know, so I think something in there that said that, you know, you meet periodically with, with the superintendent of schools to see what their needs are and if they have any plans. So, so the city is not surprised. So I think ongoing dialogue between the two entities is probably a good way.
Yeah, it makes me think of, and you were on the commission at the time when they changed the districting last time. And the city had to put in a bunch of sidewalks and make a bunch of changes because the districts changed and kids were walking from different areas. So definitely that's something that plays in. Good call.
I would just.
Glad you're here tonight.
Me too. I missed you all. Most of you.
In that same area, preserving community character as volunteerism and civic engagement, I think you guys should pat yourself on the backs and put some more stuff in there with the amount of festivals that are now going on in Newton. How the city has approved and helped a lot more in town. Where I've seen in the last 10 years, a lot more festivals pop up that the community is supportive for and you guys are really pushing and helping back those. So I think that should be put in there as well, that you guys are doing a really good job with helping do that.
And the commission is always open to closing streets and putting out street barricades and all that kind of stuff. I think what you're talking about. Pat yourself on the back for that, yeah.
Okay, back to housing. Apologize, going back and forth. Any other housing items you'd like to discuss? Yeah, or other ideas? What was that plan called? The Housing Supply Accelerator through NLC?
Yeah, that's APA, the American Planning Association, along with the National League of Cities, is called the Housing Supply Accelerator Playbook.
Playbook.
You can just Google that and print off PDF.
Yeah.
You don't have to buy it. It's just right on there, so.
And I don't have anything, but I, I have been to a, a lot of, you know, planning meetings at Realtor organizations. And there's a lot of discussion that, you know, a lot of times cities can't get out of their own way and allow for different types of, of growth.
Yep.
I don't have a plan on what that may look like or may be, but I think there's probably a lot of information out there that if we're going to do a comprehensive plan, we should take a look at some different plans, not just reiterate what we've already got or take from another city what they have done. And unfortunately, that's what most cities do, is they just steal or just reiterate what another city has done.
Sure, sure. Sure, sure.
And there's, no, then you don't have, you don't ever get to the good ideas.
Yeah, yeah.
So.
I, I agree. I just signed up for a webinar in a couple of weeks. It's titled 13 Ways to Kill Your Development in Your Community, because a lot of people are, and, and the paragraph, the blurb stated how it has to be very unique to your community and you really need to put some thought behind it, so, yeah.
It was, I was speaking at the Topeka Builders Association a couple of weeks ago, and it was interesting because the city actually showed up and said, hey, we're thinking about allowing ADUs in portions of the community. How, how do you, the building environment, feel about that? And then there were a lot of questions because they didn't want, you know, to go out in the public and start talking about that without the support of those who would actually be building those units. And so, I think that kind of openness is, is really helpful, so.
Sure. The Newton Downtown District, that's the next area. There are a couple of items that say, we'll give update at next meeting. I believe that was the, that was the spreadsheet that was sent out. So, there are items embedded in this plan that are part of another plan, which is the Downtown Development Plan. Is that what it's called, Rebecca? Downtown Development Plan?
Yeah, the Downtown Master Plan.
Master Plan. That plan also needed a review, which Rebecca completed. Rather than sending that out in conjunction with this, I thought we could look at that at another meeting. So, if there is an item that's attached to the Downtown Master Plan, that one is 75% not done. So, that one has, is, and maybe Rebecca, you can give an update. It's sort of been sitting on a shelf. I don't, is that accurate? We haven't been, well, give us a status on the, on that plan.
Sure. And of course, it was enacted before I was here, so Suzanne may have to comment a little bit. My understanding is while the plan was approved, it was not fully funded, and so many of the objectives in the plan require significant funding for downtown, and there have been mixed feelings about that priority of investment, especially in some of our citizen communities. You'll notice even in the re-Newton plan, while it's a consideration for improvement, the use of public funds has not been widely supported. And you'll notice that again in the 2020 citizen survey that we did, the use of public funds went to other things such as paying down debt and finishing a couple of the larger quality-of-life projects. So, most of it you'll see when we get to that, potentially at the next meeting, is going to be large infrastructure-type programs that come with a significant cost.
That's one I have on my list, the grade separation, or somehow, whatever that means. Other cities have got funding through the railroads to do grade separation projects. Just want to keep it on a list so there is a potential whenever down the road, that I think that's a big thing for Newton.
I would like to comment on that.
I figured you would.
Because if you look at Newton, and don't look just at downtown, because if you want to have a grade separation downtown, it's going to wipe out your historic district. And we looked at this many years ago, and the public said, not only no, but hell no. We're not doing that. We're not wiping it out. And so, I think you got to move back a little bit and look at it. We do have an overpass. We have two of them, one on US 50 and one on I-135. The question is, do we want to have one more in the interior of town? If we do, are people willing to blow up some neighborhoods? Because, you know, you can't just do that within a block. It takes multiple blocks, so.
Yeah, and that's a good point. And I wasn't specifically talking about Main Street, but, you know, Broadway or some other crossing, potentially. I've just seen it done, like Hayesville did one a few years ago. Wellington's looking at one now. Wichita did the big one downtown, but.
Right.
There's potential there. It would be nice for something to be done, but.
We've looked at First Street and at Main Street before were the best options. But again, I mean, I could, we could talk a lot about this, but.
Yeah, I just wanted to throw it out.
I just say be careful because that could make people very, very upset.
Yeah.
And, and it says here you weren't able to get BNSF to move their switchyard?
Shocking, right?
Other comments under Newton Downtown District?
On the signage. You know, I, I will tell you that I have actually had people comment about, well, I wasn't sure how to get downtown.
Oh, okay.
Our signage, signage still does lack a little bit, and it may not be from the point where they actually get here. But, you know, back in the day, there would have been some signage, you know, for Newell's Truck Stop at some point in time down the road, that way and that way. Well, you're not seeing that type of signage anymore. That, no, it wasn't done by the city of Newton, but it was done by a private individual, but that's probably not going to happen anymore.
Yeah, yeah.
So, now you've got to maybe do some of those things at a further distance away.
Sure.
To see that Newton's coming up and what's available at that point in time.
Yeah. Do you mean like on interstates or highways? Is that what you're talking about, Arlen?
Yeah, those city interstates.
Yeah.
Okay.
You know, we went from two exits to one, which is why the Meridian project bothers me a little bit because it's basically doing the same thing, is taking another one away. Yes, it's still there.
Yeah.
No, it's not in the right spot. But those things, we, we went from, we have lost two intersections to, to get into the city of Newton since 2010.
What's the other one?
Old Main.
Oh, yeah.
Old Main was close, the at-grade crossings.
I mean, it was, it was an exit that we have lost.
In the name of safety.
Yeah.
Sure.
Okay, yeah, thank you.
Is there a big call on the farmers' markets to actually have, like, some other cities have like a designated place with, with shade and anything like that? Public ever? You know, now they just have a parking lot. To me, that's enough farmers' market, people just show up. Is there any master plan? Because I know apparently to Mayor Cry, there's a master plan. Is there something on that to build, that type of overhangs in a parking lot that can still be used as a public parking lot, but on weekends host something, shady areas, those type of.
Right.
Structures, is that something on that?
That was talked about in the Downtown Master Plan, and I think it's touched on there, and when Rebecca goes over that with you, that may be brought up. We have talked on many, many occasions with the farmers' market folks at looking at locations that already have the shade and setting up, but they are unwilling to move from anything, from a place that isn't just immediately next to Main Street. And several years ago, we looked at the Girl Scout House in that area as well, and the neighborhood next to it did not want that change. We've talked about, like, around Military Park, having them park along Broadway because there's a lot of shade there and set up in the park, but they only want to set up, you know, in the back of the vehicles. We also looked at, I mean, I could go on. We've looked at multiple locations, and they're very insistent that they want it to be very near Main Street. And so, then when you start looking at that, it's difficult to find a location that is a publicly owned location. However, the Downtown Master Plan did look at options for the area where 320 North Mania is, the old South Dillon's, that someday we will get to the point where we can tear that building down. And will that be a place where a public event like that could be held possibly? Or will it be, you know, a taxpaying entity that looks at a proposal there? We will find out at some point in the future.
Since you bring that property up.
Uh-huh, yeah.
Be great to put that in this plan somewhere.
Agreed, agreed. We're getting lots closer. Is, we're dealing with the railroad. It takes a little bit longer.
I can, I can call them.
We, well, I have my own opinions on that, but.
Yeah.
It's not just a railroad problem. I mean, we could eliminate them today. We could take them down today. We may not be able to build today, but we could certainly take them down and go to a flat space.
We could, we could take them down, but we have to deal, if we're going to take the footings out, we have to deal with the contamination. And so, we have to decide, do we want to pay for that ourselves, or do we want the railroad to contribute, which they are on the hook to contribute? That, that's, that's the issue.
Yeah, I mean, that could be retroactive.
I don't think they would agree with that, but at least, that's what their attorneys are telling us.
They don't agree with the contamination we're beginning with.
How about livability and healthy community?
All right.
The one item I had was the One Stop Center for Social Services. The action item was to work with social service providers on a plan to create the center. I believe the idea was to really create a building, a place where somebody could stop and fulfill their needs of many social services. We have plenty of social services within the community. They may, there may not be a one-stop shop. I thought perhaps the city could allow, could work with those social service providers by obtaining information that if somebody needed it, it would be available on our website, but not necessarily a one-stop shop. So, there's no, there really is no action at this point.
Do we have a comprehensive list?
We do not. Not that I know about. Maybe we do, do we?
Maybe that's your start.
Yeah.
I mean, maybe that's the one thing you do for that.
Sure, sure, absolutely.
Create a.
Commissioner O'Neill, I would remind us all that we do have the Harvey County Resource Guide.
Oh, thank you.
And they're all listed under there under Social Services. So, they do a really good job of providing that around town. It is very long, so.
Is that a printed pamphlet, Rebecca?
It has been. I don't know if in the past year or two, they've continued to print as many as they had, but it used to be available throughout locations around the community, including City Hall. I could check and see if it's still being printed or if they've moved to digital only.
Okay.
Infant and childcare, are we doing anything to help the private sector finding more of this, alleviate the problem we're having now in Newton?
I would, in my limited time here, I have been invited to sit on the Childcare Task Force, which the first meeting is next week, so.
I think we have one win coming, right? The new place coming in town.
We have, actually, in the last month, we've had, month and a half, we've had three new places open.
Good.
There's definitely improvement. It's all within the last six months. At the public-private partnership meeting, which is a monthly meeting held at the Bread Basket every month, we had the Childcare Task Force present Dalton Black, I believe, with United Way, presented last month on the, what he perceived to be the improvement in childcare in the county. We also talked about the roadblocks being pretty much pay. You can't keep staffing because it's a low-paying job and it's a tough job to, to fill. How can cities, counties, nonprofits, businesses help support us in sustaining childcare? And so, it was a great conversation. Lots of ideas were thrown out there. That's what the conversation's going to be in the next couple of weeks, so, yeah. I don't have any metrics for you. I don't have statistics. I could probably bring that, actually, I will grab that for you and send it out because it's good information to have. I just don't have that today.
Got to get your schools involved.
Yes, yes.
Do we have a CVB or is it choose Newton? What, what, how's that moved?
So, there is a CVB, but it's only staffed with 50% of a person. That same person also coordinates the Main Street programming on a day-to-day basis.
So, we have the what, the what program?
Main Street Program.
Oh.
So, it's a 50/50 split of a single person, but they are two separate functions.
Other comments or questions about livability and health community? Okay, Parks and Recreation. Great show. No, I'm sorry.
Any other, wasn't there a new group that came forward?
Oh, yeah, Themion. Them, well.
Just locally, just recently.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear what you said.
Wasn't there a, a new group that has come forward to do some ballfields improvements and things like that?
Brad Cook, the park.
Yeah, we're, we're having a joint meeting. The City Commission, the NRC, and the School Board are having a joint meeting tomorrow before the City Commission meeting, and.
Is that the map that was, there was kind of a map or layout?
Yes.
Published online?
Yeah. To discuss Themion Park, and the meeting will be held at the Meridian Center, and it's open to the public. The meeting begins at 5 o'clock tomorrow evening, if you're interested.
Good.
I guess I could answer that. The action item was work with school board to locate a future park adjacent to new school site. This is, this would be a revamped park, not necessarily new land, but it would be, it would be a new project.
Any other questions or comments of any of the items listed?
I would like to make another comment.
Go ahead.
You guys can shut me up anytime. I'm just reiterating what I've learned in the last six months, five months. As we dig through the budget and we go through this process and in conversations with all staff and digging through surveys that we've recently had, I think we went back 24 months, not further back. The will of our residents is to increase the quality-of-life projects, which is Parks and Rec. I mean, that's what people want. They want more splash pads, they want the pool, they want the library, they want the items that will, that can be family-friendly, they can be, that are outdoors, the placemaking, all that jazz. That being said, I think that we have a great group of commissioners that see that and have placed value in that. So, when we do the budget, that policy document will be the living doc, the living support of our Parks and Rec comp plan and, and strategic goals. So, please know that we are very aware that's, that's what, that's what our citizens want. And I bet you in our new comp plan that when we do engagement review, that we will have that continued expression from our, from our citizens, so.
Yeah, it seems like a lot of cities around are pickleball courts.
Right.
For the rage, tennis courts, too. But a lot of, you know, the splash pads, a lot of, around Wichita, you know, looking at, well, like Derby has a dinosaur park.
Yeah.
Aquarium, heard about an aquarium possibly, you know, stuff like that.
Right, work city, right.
Yeah.
That's what people want.
We've got quite a few tennis courts that aren't being used that we'd love to change the pickleball courts in the city.
Yeah.
I think it would be too expensive to move those over. I mean, it's always expensive, but take that used property already and move those to pickleball courts, some of the parks on the east side down, too.
Don't you just repaint the lines or something?
Resurface and repaint, yeah.
Resurface and repaint, yeah.
That's one of the items that's being looked at for Themion, is pickleball courts.
I think there's, you know, the tree program. I, I happened to come across, you know, something recently about the tree program. I didn't know that we still had it, so maybe, maybe I, maybe I just don't see where you guys published that, but.
Can we still get coupons in the mail?
In your water bill.
In your water.
Yeah.
Is it?
It's in your water bill.
Yeah, I wondered that.
We put information out on social media. It's in the newspaper. I don't know where else we can put it.
Yeah.
I saw it.
Fair enough. Just don't see it very often. I don't, I don't pay the water bill, so.
[laughing].
I don't open it.
And it gets used to our coupons.
I think.
Oh, and there's waiting lists.
There, yeah.
So, it, it's a good, a good program.
Yeah, I think we ran out of spring coupons in the first, like, three weeks or something like that.
That's awesome.
Yeah.
Our, the new developers should be, the new construction places should be taking that into consideration big time.
Anything else on Parks and Recreation, or we can ask the manager to continue? Sustainable development?
I actually don't have anything for this, for any specific feedback. Please let me know if you would like for us to elaborate on the description of any of these action items. for us to elaborate on the description of any of these action items.
Do you have any comment on the green building programs?
Yeah, I'm not, not a fan of LEED, but, but the National Green Building Standard is really good and it's, it's the largest used residential.
You said national. What did?
The National Green Building Standard, it's, yeah, it's overseen by the Home Innovations Research Lab in Upper Marlboro, Maryland, so. But yeah, in, in, National Green Building Standard. But I will tell you, here's a fact. You know, I often speak to the buildings that we build around here that they're the most efficient, most sustainable homes ever built. And I said that in the Wichita area builders meeting about a month or so ago, and Heidi Brandt, who is the builder liaison with Evergy, she said, "You're absolutely right. Even though Wichita has built approximately a thousand new homes every year for the last two years, they have not seen an appreciable use of electricity in the residential market in those two years." That their electrical usage has come from outside. That means the houses that we're building are more efficient. Those that we're remodeling, we're putting in better HVAC units, better windows, more insulation. So we're doing our part. So as we continue to layer on additional requirements on new construction, that's probably not where the juice is worth the squeeze. So, to use a colloquialism, so. Anyway, just, just a small advertisement. Anyway, so no, that, I mean, there are green building standards out there that are really good. Anything else under sustainable development? Transportation then.
Okay, the one item that stands out for me is the Dirt Street Paving Program, which is the last item in this area. The action item is provide funding in the CIP to pave dirt streets. The response was that in 2005, this was presented to the City Commission and they chose not to fund.
About how many miles of dirt streets do we have? Is that in miles? Is it in blocks?
It's in miles. I don't have that on the top of my head.
No, you know, I'm just, I'm trying to think of where they are.
That would stop one commenter on Facebook.
Okay. But again.
Yeah.
East side, oh, of course, Elm.
Elm from Eighth to Seventh, Boyd.
If you call the.
Boyd from.
That's out, first to.
First to.
Between 10th and 12th, between 10th and 12th.
So I think those would come from those people who didn't want the assessment that was going to be involved if they were to have their street.
Right after Anderson.
We get a lot of complaints.
I believe it.
On 10th Street, that big block at the very end of that, up to 11th.
That'll be on the commission. They'll have to determine whether they want.
I did have one, I did have one thing for streets. Ever since I've lived in Newton, Washington Road, streetscaping and getting the poles off, you know, it's just not a great aesthetically looking street. It's pretty narrow in places. Curb and gutter right, right along the edge. It rains, you, you know, water, stormwater backs up. That, and that might be one of those long-range visions, but it seems like there could be, that's an entryway to Newton.
Improvement?
Yeah.
With, with the last, the Sea Clip project that we finished south of First Street, you know where the curb is there across from the old school? What's the school name? Rose, no.
Washington.
Washington, Washington.
Oh, Washington.
We, we tried to.
Take a little more.
To take a little of the, the curb off of that. So that you could get through there a little bit better. The problem is you got a storm sewer there and you couldn't move everything. It gets really costly, but we tried to smooth it out a little bit, so there's more room in that outside lane.
Yeah, I, the worst part of it for me is the, having the, the light poles right off the back of the curb.
Right.
I can't believe, you know.
We just don't, yeah, we'd have to buy it right away.
Right.
It's possible.
Yeah, it's a big thing, yeah, that'd be something good to do down the road.
Well, I, you know, the other thing I'd say about that is, so, it was presented, not approved by that, that particular commission at that particular time, and it seems like maybe, maybe we did try it more than one time. You know, is that something that should be talked about more regularly than that? You know, especially Elm Street, you know, with.
Oh, the dirt streets.
The 12th Street one. There's a lot of people that go to high school that aren't from town, and to drive by and see a street on the way that's not paved, I've always thought that looked a little out of place, let's just say.
What, Arlen, which one are you talk, what are you talking about?
I guess it'd be Ash, 12th and Ash. It's not called Ash. It's that one little street just toward the 12th Street. It's one block long, goes from 12th to 13th.
Okay.
It's one block. I don't even know what they call it. I don't even know what the name of the street is.
It's from.
Because it's not paved.
Gotcha.
It's got to be Ash though, right?
Maybe. I'm not picturing it. I must not have had a complaint from there.
It'd be one block east of Plum.
Uh huh.
It's one block from.
Oh, oh, yeah, yeah. I do know where you mean.
It's Plum, well Plum from 10th, no, not Plum from 10th.
It's not Plum. It's, it's got to be, it's not Ash either.
It's at the end of that, oh, Elm, there's, Elm's not, Elm's not paved from 10th to 11th. I know that. It's that big huge lot that guy has on 10th Street in the north side. That's not paved. And probably because that drainage ditch goes through there.
Yeah.
That's probably why it's not, because it'd take too much to fix the bridge, is my guess. Yeah, I'm not finding.
Anyway.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I.
Maybe it's time to bring it back in front of them again.
Well, we could, yeah, we could.
Anything else on transportation? Municipal utilities?
I wanted to comment, but I, I think the city's done a good job keeping up with rehab and sewer and water lines and getting the wastewater plant updated and stormwater rigs too, so I don't have any comments really.
Someday we'll have the lowest water sewage rates around.
Someday.
We will.
Someday.
We will. Everybody's updating.
Anything, anything else want to comment about that? Do you need a motion from this body to?
Carl, one more thing?
Oh, go ahead, sorry.
I didn't see it in the plan anywhere, but Justin, you might be able to help me, the, the, the building codes that we are working from today is different than the building codes that the city of Wichita has adopted. Is that correct?
I would have to look into that, but we're looking to read, we're looking at adopting new ones.
Should that be in this plan anywhere?
We have, there was an item that stated we are looking at, was there one in here, Justin?
There is. It was the Minimal Housing Code is in there.
Yeah, that was the housing code, I think.
In the housing.
Oh, that's IPMC.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So that one.
Sorry.
Yeah, we're, we're looking at.
So.
That'd be a good thing to add.
You know, having.
Yeah.
I want to make sure we're talking about the same thing. I'm talking about when new construction is being built, the, the codes that we are utilizing for the plumbing codes, the electrical codes are different than the codes that are in Wichita.
Okay.
Because I hear about it all the time.
Mm-hmm, so do I.
From the builders.
So.
And I don't, I don't know why we have, I don't know why we have a different code when we're 25 miles apart and we've been trying to attract them to come up here for so long.
Okay.
It doesn't make any sense to me.
I'll have to look in. I don't, I'm not sure what they've adopted compared to us. IRC and IBC are, I'm guessing 2018, and I'm guessing that's what they're under.
Wichita's under 2018. The trouble could be that we have certain amendments, or Wichita has amendments that we may not have. And we may, and we may have amendments that they don't have. When I sat on that code board, there are recommended amendments that, that actually got through the process that, that are kind of distributed and, and certain communities will pick them up. Because we're home rule, we get to do that. And almost every time, those conversations were, what's Wichita doing? What are their surrounding communities doing? So we constantly looking at that because we know tradespeople and contractors are moving back and forth, and we want that.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, the reason I bring it up is because I, specifically I had, there was somebody that built a duplex in town and they said it cost them $25,000 more to build that duplex in Newton, Kansas than it cost them to build it in Wichita, Kansas. That's a significant difference. And they said it was because of all of the different codes that are up here that were down there. Now, could have been that they went ahead and did their own code and we made them change it, which is what might, what might have cost them some money. I don't know. But $25,000 for a project, that's a significant difference between 25 miles, in my opinion.
And that's just the difference between a duplex and a triplex on doing IRC versus IBC. And we do have different codes when it does come to that from Wichita here, but our bill, our building board has made that decision. And that's, I mean, we're getting ready to look at these again, so the building board could look at it a different way, but yeah.
We have a building board?
Yes.
Who's the building board?
Contract. Board of Code Standards and Appeals.
Yep.
We don't, we don't, but we don't have a Builders Association in Newton anymore, so who?
So those are, those are rec, sorry, those are appointed by the City Commission, right? With the various trades. There are plumbers on the plumbing board, there are contractors on the contractor board, there are electricians.
Electrician.
Architect.
And.
Architects, yep.
And so contractors and, yeah, so when I sat on that, so. So yeah, so it is people working in the trades. It's not administrators making those recommendations. So, it sounds like we need to look at it.
Yep.
Yeah. I won't have, I have a comment about that, but I won't say it.
So would you like a formal action from this committee that we reviewed it, or do you think that the minutes will show that we went through each section so you can check that box?
Devin, do, do we need formal action?
I think the, I think going through it, item by item was enough in the minutes.
Excellent. Okay, well, thank, thank the commissioners.
Yeah.
Danielle, thank you very much for presenting that tonight. Is there any new business for the commissioners? Aubrey, Devin, Justin, Rebecca, commissioners, any new business?
Carl.
Yes.
Can we make that an action item?
Yes, I was just going to say that. I changed my mind. We should really make that an action item.
It's cleaner, in my mind.
Yeah, good call, Justin.
Okay, so I think I would, I would ask for a motion to accept the reviewed comprehensive plan as we reviewed it. With, with our recommendations, or you come up with a
Yeah.
motion that you'd like to say.
I'd make that motion.
I'll read something like that. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Something like that?
I'll second, something like that.
Any discussion in regard to the motion? Hearing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposed, say no. We went through new business. I didn't see any, so we are adjourned. Now I'd like to welcome everybody to the Newton Historic Preservation Commission meeting. Thank you all for being here. The first item of tonight's agenda would be to review the minutes of the meeting held March the 4th. And had an opportunity to review the minutes?
Take a motion to approve?
The motion to approve and the second. Any discussion in regard to the motion? Signified by saying, I mean, if there's no discussion, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying yes.
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 Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Is there a reason we're not electing a chair and vice chair for this?
The way that the bylaws are written, and I double-checked them tonight, they say that they're after the May meeting, which would put them in June for us. So we must have, when we went to it, had different months, so I apologize. You will do the same thing at your next meeting, so.
Okay.
I'm guessing that was an administrative error at some point, but we will, we will take care of that at the next one. I double-checked.
When it didn't appear.
No.
I thought I'm trying to shuck some jobs, but.
No, it's okay. I did check, rechecked the bylaws while we've been sitting here, just to ensure that.
Thank you, Rebecca. Item two on tonight's agenda is to review 317 East Fourth for the application of building and new outbuilding. So Rebecca, do you have this report?
Of course, thank you. The applicant, Mr. Gary Sunquist, has been very patient as we had quite an extensive meeting here prior. He does live on 317 East Fourth and is wanting to construct a basic outbuilding, a shed of sorts. Aubrey, could you bring the pictures up for this? In your packet, you have the previous things that have been approved with the one historic preservation of a re-roof. This is a 1947 home with fairly minimal variations in the neighborhood. You'll notice in his application that the sizing fits within our standard planning and zoning requirements. And he is looking to do the external siding to match along with the pitch and will be a lack of use as this is an outbuilding. The recommendation that we have through our local guidelines and what we have from the Department of, the Secretary of the Interiors Office is that new buildings are supposed to match but not distract and not stand out too much, but also not look like they were historical in and of themselves. So in staff's review of the project, we do see that. But he is here for any of your other questions and I could answer anything additional if need be.
Would the applicant like to, please, identify yourself and?
I'm Gary Sunquist. We actually lived 33 years out by East Lake and have retired. So I got nothing better to do this evening. And moved to our retirement cottage and I need to build a wood shop so that I can continue buying material for Mr. Hanson.
Great, now I can't vote.
He didn't, no, I, I will build, it will absolutely look like the house and will miter the edges on the, on the lap siding and, and put skirting on the bottom and it will have a 12-12 pitch and it will, it will match the house as closely as I can get it.
Rebecca, does he have to miter the corners on that?
I know, I'm, I'm just curious, for my knowledge, because I always get asked at the lumberyard, and that, I said, I don't know, so if, if.
It's always, it's always preferred. It does, from the street view, it does give a better look.
Match the existing?
It does match the existing.
For what it's worth, the, as probably most of the houses in that area, it's been added onto more than one time. And there's actually corners that are mitered, there's corners that are trimmed, and so. But it, it actually, at, at, at my age, it sounds like fun to miter. I'm, I've never done that. And building a little jig to make it come out right, I, I'm looking forward to the, to the challenge.
It, it does have a, it's a preferred method, so.
Yeah.
It is a 12-12 pitch and I'm getting a little old to do that roofing, but I, well, we'll see how that goes.
It's a small building.
It's a small, wow, yeah.
Yeah.
Gary, I used to own the house right behind you across the alley, 314 East Third, 20 years ago. So I lived there for 16 years, so I know that neighborhood well. So, anyway, other questions for the applicant?
At this time, commissioners, I would remind you that this is a two-part recommendation.
Okay.
Your first one will be to approve the project as it will not just damage or destroy historic resource. That's fairly evident by the fact that it's a new build in a place where there has not been a, there is currently not a historic resource. And then the second is that you're approving the application, it sounds like, as presented, as it fits within the local guidelines since it is within the local historic district. So you can take those together as one, but they'll both mean to be noted.
Do I have a motion for one or both of those?
I'll make a motion to approve the project as will not damage or destroy historic resource and to approve the application as presented, as it fits within the local guidelines.
Is there a second?
Second?
Discussion? First of all, Gary, I think your proposal. First of all, Gary, I think your proposal is, has been really well thought out. I think the way that you're trying to match both the, the ends and the overhang as well as the mitered siding, I think it's going to fit really well into that historical neighborhood. I think it will, so.
And for what it's worth, my, my pergola that I'm going to put in next year is going to have those same little ends on that. See those, those overhanging beams coming out there? The pergola will match that too, so.
So we're going to see the pergola next year, next week?
Eh, probably, yeah.
Okay.
But that's, that's the next project.
Build, build, build. Any other comments? Okay, hearing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor of the motion that it will not damage or detract from the property and it fits within the guidelines. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. Rebecca, you placed this preservation conference in front of us. Do you want to speak to that?
Yes, I would, commissioners. As you may remember, this week we are hosting the Kansas Preservation Conference, we're here in Newton, with most of the events happening at the Meridian Center. We do have four of you registered and those funds are being paid with through a grant from the Kansas Historic Preservation Office. I do still have space for one more, so if anybody makes a last-minute decision that they want to stop by, just email off or we can get you ready to go there.
Wins lunch.
Wins lunch. Lunch is Thursday at noon. It's in the, you'll hear, that's actually a great segue, Commissioner Newell. Our keynote for the entire event is over lunch on Thursday and his name is Chris Chain. He is a Main Street Director and Redevelopment of Downtowns around America. And he'll be using Newton as a case study to talk about how we can continue to build housing on our upper stories in downtown. And, yes.
I was just going to make sure that the commissioners knew about the workshop for Main Street and Certified Local Governments. That's the very first activity on Wednesday, which is what drew me to it.
Very good, yes. We are one of the very few Main Street communities that is also a certified local government, so we're quite proud of that fact.
Okay. Any questions?
I like how Richard uses his picture from like 20 years ago.
Yeah, it looked like his high school picture.
And the last thing is, as you all might have remembered, we did put in the grant for the National Alliance of Preservation Commissioners. They are expected at the end of the month to make a determination on whether we have achieved that funding. And we did put in for two commissioners and one staff member.